We're afraid we had a gas leak. And it turns out that the janitors had just dumped some chemicals down in the drain and they've mixed together. Produced some sort of ammonia.
Yeah, it can be dangerous.
I didn't hear anything from Jason, did you?
No.
He wasn't here last time, he was.
Nope.
You're logging that, right?
I'm logging that.
He got a big promotion.
Huh?
He got a big promotion.
This will be his second.
I don't care. Oh, I know that one. Maybe that's why.
Sounds like he's about to get demoted.
I mean, three consecutive misses.
We'll see, it could be weather. I'm logging it.
The weather did hit pretty hard over by our house.
Yeah. Me too. But, okay. Let's call the meeting order, the planning commission. We ready?
Yep.
All right. It's Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, I'm gonna call the planning commission meeting order. It's, what, two minutes after six?
Yep.
Everybody's here except Jason, right? Yep. What about the agenda? Anybody got anything they want to add or change to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on. Anyone have a conflict of interest about anything that we might discuss tonight? Nope, hearing none, we'll move on. General public comments, I see we've got a fellow here with one of the items on the agenda, so we'll discuss that at that time. Let's move on, minutes. Everybody reviewed the minutes? Has anybody got any corrections, additions, deletions?
Move their approval.
Second.
There's motion and second to approve the minutes, those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Miles, do you have any communication for us today?
None at this time.
Well, thank you. Let's move on to all business, capital improvement plan.
Okay. Yeah, John, if you don't mind. I'll just go over quickly. So use the same format that we typically use since I started in twenty twenty-one. Just updated all the current positions. Updated some of the dates and timelines throughout this. This kind of just describes the CIP process. And what all goes into it. Got updated numbers from administration and provided those here and these tables. You'll see, really there was a lot of budgeting last year for some of these bigger infrastructure projects. So the table is missing several columns that you saw last year. That's largely because those projects haven't funded now and so they're not in this year's budget. I think also Kate might know pretty well, like, there's a lot of conversations at the board level right now of having a more short up budget this year. So I think Karen is prepping for that, so she didn't include as much as maybe she's included in years past. That's all I can really read into that. In terms of the projects that were scored from you guys, you'll see I can, I included all the various scores. And I'll try to relate to the board when this is presented, you know, why the planning commission chose to go about it this way. Kate can probably help me do that too. That, we're just trying to say that, you know, this one score at the end, the total score isn't monolithic. There's different aspects of this scoring that affect different things, such as the likelihood to be funded. What the impact to the overall community is and then what the department difference is. So this gives them hopefully a better idea of where at least you guys stand on your review of this. Some more information than they received in the past. Obviously myself, Karen, Ryan have heard the feedback about the process in general. And I think that's something that Brian is looking at in the future.
What's it?
And then there's just a appendix that shows kind of just the general details of the different projects that were submitted. What's our floor?
Well, yeah. Is that feedback positive or negative or just?
The feedback I would say that I've been hearing is, you know, the planning commission would like more input in how the overall project is conducted. So, I don't know if it's positive or negative, I think these guys just want to see a different form of the process. Unfortunately for me, I feel really torn in the middle. Not to make it all about me, I guess, but like, I feel very, I'm like a middleman in this process. I'm trying to carry out the board's will and I also need information from you guys. The board ultimately, and then via Karen gets to decide what kind of CIP process we have under township. As there is no legal requirement for CIP not, which is kind of like, like an SUP. There are legal things, statutory requirements that a special use permit must meet in terms of a process. There is, and same with a comprehensive plan, there are legal requirements for a comprehensive plan. For a capital improvement plan, there are best practices.
Right.
But there is no Planning Enabling Act that requires the CIP to be ran in a certain way.
And they ultimately held the money, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
But yeah, so that's the report. I think it's thorough. It's as thorough as any other report that bad township has produced in the past. It's not more so, I would say more so, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I think it's pretty well. I did have an hour, about a half hour discussion with Ryan Sunday afternoon about various things, and the CIP came up. He would very much appreciate it if we had some verbiage that went with that discussion we had about the parking lot at Wishwasher Park and the ported place. Because it seems reasonable to everybody that we need to do something about the drainage before we approve the parking area, the playground area.
Yeah, I included some of the comments, the best my ability after the reporting and the appendix. But also John, I think it would be good, you know, that Monday meeting, if you were present.
I plan it.
As the chair, to kind of relay the sentiment of the planning commission in regards to that item.
Yep.
Because it's just one thing to be in the report, it's probably another thing for her to hear from you at the mic.
Correct.
I'm sorry, did you say if this was going on the agenda for the next meeting?
For the board of trustees.
Board of trustees?
Uh, that ultimately is up to Karen, so maybe I shouldn't speak there. But I would assume there's no reason not to put it on the next agenda if it's approved tonight by this body.
But you're not gonna be there?
I am technically on vacation, but I will be there. Because I got too many projects in the queue, as you know from last meeting, to not be there, that'd be disastrous. We have like seven items at the board right now. We're setting records.
That's a record.
That's your record? I think we're setting a rec, I think we've had the most amount of planning items on the board's agenda ever.
Yeah, I think so.
I like it because it's, I don't have to spend so much time reading the packet because I've already done it.
Yeah.
You've already read it already.
Already read it already.
This time, this body's paying off.
That's right.
I remember having five a few years ago, but I don't remember ever having seven.
It's a lot.
And they're not little projects, a lot of them either.
Every single one of them aren't a big thing.
Yep. So, anybody got anything else they want to talk about?
I got a couple comments, questions, whatever.
For sure?
On, on page three and five, it talks about the length of the plan of the programming period. One C on page three says, why do we use a six-year programming period? And then on page, and then on page five, it says five years.
Yep, should be five years, so thanks for the point on that.
Now, the other thing though is back in the state, the state requirements, their state says six years again.
Oh, sorry.
The, the State Planning Act says six years.
No, again, there is no statutory requirement, they're saying that, but that's not.
Okay, it's just.
Best practices.
Best practice.
People do six years, but that's, we updated that last year and obviously.
It's just five, okay.
We didn't include that in this, this was the template, I probably amended it last year, I remember we didn't catch it this year. But a lot of offices are moving to five-year rolling CIP plan. And the reason for that is so it winds up with a comprehensive, which aren't a five-year basis.
Yep.
It was kind of wonky for a while that they were using six years, but then it was like, why not just go five? Because then you get to roll with when you get to the plan.
Makes sense, yeah.
Can I make one comment about the, I wasn't here last meeting?
Yeah.
About the Wishwasher parking lot.
Go ahead.
You know, one of the main reasons they want to reconnoitre that is to make more parking spots. They could almost double the size of that parking lot, right where it's at, simply by moving it farther south. There's two cottonwood trees there that could be taken down. And what they use it for now is storing the fishing dock in the wintertime.
Correct.
All they'd have to do is, especially now with the, with the increased interest in getting a construction company in there and grading it off and taking that. It would be simple to increase the size of that. I think it'd be foolish not to do that right now while you have all that equipment there.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about that parking lot, quite honestly.
But literally, if you look at it, like from Fatch, you can, you can almost double the size of that parking lot simply by moving it close to the, to the property line with the party store.
Well, I think one of the concerns that all of us had was the runoff that you're creating with that parking lot, because.
Yeah, well, you'd have, you may have to build it up to make it go the other way, but.
Could crown it to go the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Easy, that'd be, I mean, literally, they're gonna be, they're gonna be grading off over a foot of that anyway. So they could just grade it over there.
Well, there was some discussion about that too, because the surface that's there, I think you and I agreed Ray, it was already substantial. Why dig that all out and replace it?
Yeah, I think the president take that out and put sand in, my way of putting it now is better than sand, so why would you take that out?
Their argument was that they want to take out the limestone because it's, it has that residue when it, you know, when it breaks down.
Well, yeah.
It's almost like snot, you know, in the rain, for lack of a better term. We'll call it limestone snot, how's that?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know why anybody put limestone for a parking lot or a driveway, either one.
Well, it was popular, but when you're close to a waterway, you should never use limestone.
No.
And change the pH of the water drastically.
Well, the other thing is they want to cap it with crushed concrete and I don't understand that one. I think if I was gonna do anything, I'd put asphalt on it, I don't.
Crushed asphalt would be the best, you can get it for thirty-five dollars a ton. Right here from Schneider.
Millings and their cleaner.
What's that?
Their cleaner.
Oh, yeah, Millings would be.
Their cleaner.
What are cleaners?
Millings.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Asphalt Millings, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, Schlegel's got a huge pile up over there on Woodston.
They, they were, they were going to donate it to us.
Oh, just for the cost of the trucking?
Yep. And that was back when, you know, when diesel was so much.
Yeah.
But then they got bought out by some Middle Eastern company.
Yeah, I heard that.
Yep. Yeah, she told me all about it, Amanda, the office manager.
I can't understand why anybody would even do such a thing.
You know why they do it, don't you?
Well, there's a lot of things in life that are important than money.
Is there any other, not to.
Yeah, let's cut this off. Oh, Ryan wanted to know if we, was possible to move the CIP to after the budget.
It's possible, I mean, the board can do whatever they want here. Typically, best practice again is that the CIP comes before the budget, because it's supposed to inform their process.
But see, the problem is that then you don't know what you've got, if anything, to work with.
Yeah, that's true, but like, so they, what, how, in my mind, how it's supposed to go down, again, I don't give a say here. In my mind, is you, they get all the scores from you guys, they see what your priorities are and what you've given us for.
That's correct.
Then they go through their whole process and they get to decide, they don't have to be like, okay, well, I forgot what we talked about a month ago. They should be going back and looking and being like, okay, where was the planning commission on this?
Well, I agree with you, but nevertheless, he asked and I said, I'll bring it up to the planning commission and see what we think.
Yeah, I guess I would want to know what Ryan's thoughts are on the benefit of moving it after.
Um, I don't think that would be a good idea, because then they would always rationalize, well.
We don't know.
There's zero, there's zero in there for CIPs right now, so let's use it on something else.
Yeah, so I would have to hear from Ryan, what his thought was.
Yeah, the thing I've wondered, why we, why we as a planning commissioner are including funding as part of our evaluation. I'm used to looking at, here's your six projects, which ones are the most important, regardless of what they cost?
Irrespective of cost?
Irrespective of cost. Then it's after the plan, the board makes a decision, okay, which ones we get, which ones we get money to fund, looking at which ones are the most important. The most important one may be the most expensive one, so we just can't do it right now.
Yeah.
So I, I think, you know, when we throw the, whether we get funding available or not into our evaluation, I think it kind of messes the process up.
I would like to see them.
That could be true.
I would like to see them have a little more forethought with the multi-year CIP, we've never done that.
Exactly.
They always think, oh, we gotta plop down, you know, eighty thousand dollars this year.
If something is the most important, but they can't fund it right now, what they should be doing is saying, okay, we have four years to get it funded.
Well, either they're giving it up.
I'm not trying to go, but Ray, we talked about, you know, this was like what you guys laid out, this is what we did, but we're not tied to any of this. I see your point's well taken, I think maybe next year, if the funding seems like it's corrupting the process, which is not, the planning commission's present to look for. Then maybe we just pull that out next year.
I know, I brought this up before you came on board, so you haven't heard me say this before, right? It's not the first time I've brought that up.
No, it's, I mean, it's a good point.
It's just, the other comment I got is just a thing here, on page of this report, on page eight, it's got the schedule in here.
Yep.
This one here talks about us reviewing it and adopting it on the tenth, which we're not gonna meet that day. So I don't, we want, I don't, we want to change the schedule to what it's actually going to be?
Yeah.
Or?
I will, I'll backlog it, this was the schedule we kicked out, but we had to move stuff around because of how the dates work out. So we're reviewing and adopting today, hopefully.
Yeah, that, that's fine. The other one in here talks about a public hearing. Yeah, there's two dates, probably the, the last two, September tenth and October seventh. It does talk about a public hearing in here someplace, I don't think we've had a public hearing, I don't know what is required.
Oh, it was for one of the projects, yeah.
Yeah, the date that the projects are awarded, presented, made a notice. That way if the public wants to put in comment when they're presented.
The other comment here is on page eleven, which is on a list of, well, two columns, page ten first. It would help with me, you've got on page nine, the total project cost by, by type. Then you've got the details on page eleven.
Yep.
Just add a total down at the bottom of each one of those columns, which will match what you've already got the page before, if it doesn't, keep looking back and forth. Yeah.
Yeah. That'd be a way to do it.
And then on page eleven.
Just, just so you know, that's just how the tables come from the administration, so that's just kind of planned out for.
Yeah, okay. I'll have to talk to Karen though.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good idea, I, I have zero preference.
Yeah. Then on page, page eleven, should we put these down in the order we ranked them? Right now, this kind of, if I was reviewing from the board's standpoint, I want to know which is the top project, I want that to be the top.
Yeah.
Top to bottom.
And I have a question too, when it gets to be my turn.
Yeah, I don't have a preference on that either, because some score higher in different categories, but just going out to the total score.
The totals, yeah. And then I think if we're going to include funding, although this is really the board's term reason, I think, but if we're going to determine, put these in here. I think instead of putting them in for every year with inflation factor, put them in the year that the department would like to have them built. So it'll be one number, like on page ten, there's one number for each project for each year. That's it. That's when they want to get them done.
Yeah.
May not get them done that way, but that's, you know, that's the plan. Because this thing doesn't tell us any plan, just these are the projects we want to do sometime in the next five years.
Yeah.
One thing I, about this chart on page eleven.
Yeah.
Is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
Well, yeah, it's really confusing.
I should adjust, I agree, the construction year should be twenty twenty-five, if that's what I'm saying.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm looking at total costs and then, and then twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's because the.
That's really confusing.
They go up by three percent every year.
Well, I know that, but you should have it incrementally, like if you have a big project, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, you want to split it up over five years, it's one hundred thousand dollars per year.
Right.
No, I get what you're saying, but that's not how it was proposed, is for, the only error here, and I'm seeing it myself now, is that the construction year should be twenty twenty-five. So Ben is saying, if you, if any of these get picked up, he wants them to be picked up next year. And so what that does for the inflation calculator, it shows this is the twenty twenty-five cost of that project.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Proposed at this cost in twenty-four. And what that hopefully does to the board is saying to them, if you pick all, all of these projects right now, you could get all this done for six hundred and fourteen thousand. If you sit on this for five years, now you're closer to seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So that's why we put that whole inflation calculator in there to hopefully dictate to them, like there is a cost inflation.
I just, I don't feel that this, this lends itself well to, to future planning on a multi-year basis.
I agree, but that's if the department proposed, like, okay, we want to start saving now, that's how we put it in the report.
Yeah.
But that's not how it was proposed.
All right.
Again, I'm like a middleman, like man of the time, I know the projects brought to me.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going back to sleep now.
And each of us only has one rule. And I thought Kate's idea was fantastic, you could bundle those and get a DNR trust fund grant. Because the DNR's got several hundred million dollars that they're just sitting on.
I know. About two hundred million.
All right, so we got a couple things to clean up, we noted them all, I'll probably get them all else cleaned up.
Thank you.
They're all mine still.
Pretty much. Okay, are we done with that?
Yep.
All right, as I, let's go. New business?
I, uh, we need a vote if you guys are good.
Oh, you want to, oh, because it's going to the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably should, all right.
On the adoption of the twenty twenty-four CIP.
Let's get a motion and, somebody want to make a motion, we send it to the board?
Mark does.
I'll second it.
Send it to the board. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded it? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Crainer?
Yes.
Chair Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Severi?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kaki?
Yes.
Thank you.
And absent is Commissioner Homrji.
Yep, correct.
Yep.
Okay, so now can we move on to Mallory Building?
Yeah.
Miles, you want to give us the staff report?
I'll just give you a quick summary. So this one's a pretty simple one in my opinion, but it is a use permitted by special use permit, so they do have to go through all the motions, just like anybody else.
Yep.
You guys are probably familiar with Mallory Building, they've been in here, in my time, they've been in here twice.
Yes.
If you haven't seen Kate, you've definitely seen their building on I sixty-nine. They can talk more about, you know, what they kind of specialize in and what they do and what they're attempting to do here. But the land use itself and the lens of zoning would be a warehouse land use. This is going in our kind of Coleman Road, old M seventy-eight district, which is kind of becoming a kind of a light industrial district in the township. So we feel like this use plays well in the area that it's seeded, it's similar to land uses around it. Other than there is some residential to the south of this, but again, it's surrounded on all other sides by commercial land uses, commercial residential to the west. Right now on the site, now just go to Fatch, it's easier to look at.
Yep.
You'll see, uh, this is the site where that, um, used to be like a parking gun factory. And now it's that printing shop that we've been working with and created to the township, so we're really happy about that. But this site is where Summit Group proposed a warehouse, that they ended up employing the project, probably because I would just assume that the marijuana market would, they, Summit Group does marijuana.
Yep.
They were saying that they wanted to just do this for storage, but then the market for commercial loans, interest rates went up to like nine or ten percent or something crazy, so. They're on hold for that, but again, there's a kind of a warehouse storage there. Summit also bought this building here, which is warehouse storage. This is looking to be warehouse storage, so in my mind, the land uses are similar, this is all de-development here. So in terms of side yard buffering, the requirements are fairly lax. Not to say at the pleasure of this body, they can require additional screening if they feel like it's applicable. We did talk to the applicant about some of that. Let me see if I missed anything, the acre size isn't huge, and then in terms of what they actually want to do here, so there's a warehouse on site right now. This is where Mallory, Mallory Building originally operated out, I think you guys are familiar with that, I think that's correct.
Yep.
The house on site, they're using it as an office, the house is just kind of very old and needs a lot of work to the point where they feel like it's actually financially more feasible to just demo the house and then build a new facility. So that's what they're looking to do, they want to demo this house and build a larger warehouse here, which will go back to the plans.
Will that present one go down, the present warehouse, or are they gonna expand that?
So there's existing house right there, and then this is the proposed warehouse.
Oh, okay.
There was a couple of little setback things we talked to them about, and some updates they need to make to their plans, they seemed very minimal to all of our feedback, so.
Yeah, I believe the initial proposal, we were ten foot north of the west side.
And then you guys sent the, yeah, you guys sent the updated plans, that's right. So, um, yeah, and I mean, that's the whole purpose of those pre-application meetings, we had, I think, probably like four overarching points of just whole items to clean up. And like I said, they were a minimum to that, which we appreciate, obviously. This is some renderings of the structure itself, I mean, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
You know, standard warehouse. I don't know, John, if you want the representative from the development team to come and talk about what they want to do inside this building, what they're seeking to do.
Except the commissioners.
Whatever you guys want to do.
That sounds fine to me.
I just have, I have a couple of questions, we'll get to it.
Kind of nice to know.
You want to take the podium, sir? We'll take questions. Thank you. Well, let's give ladies first here.
I was just curious what Mallory does, I'm not, I'm not familiar.
They make buildings.
Yep, in short, yeah, a lot of pre-engineered metal buildings, a lot of Dollar Generals.
Okay.
Right now we're doing a big condo development in Howell, it's like a racetrack, European style, such a lot of metal buildings mostly.
Okay.
And you said those ones just sound like, to give people an idea, because I thought this was cool, they're almost like condos that people rent to work on their cars.
Yeah, so like.
Or they're, they own them, it's a condo, but they own them from the walls in and then they work on their vehicles, like right there for the track.
Well.
So the developer is, or was an F-one driver. So his idea was to have like the bottom unit, or the bottom section of the condo to be garage, pulling off the track and then, yeah.
That'd be great. And so it's gonna be a road, road course then?
Yeah, yep.
Wow.
Very cool.
And not to go too far, but this was important for us when we were talking to you guys, what are you looking to do in this building?
Uh, this building, we are just looking to store stuff.
Okay, and what kind of stuff?
Um, so scaffolding, telehandlers, four trucks, scissor lifts. When we get a shipment for a pre-engineered metal building, instead of leaving it out back behind the warehouse, it'd be nice to have it inside, just for like security reasons and all that fun stuff.
Yeah. We'd just like to know if you're gonna store hazardous materials, you know, or something of that.
Nope. Pretty stationary stuff.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Oh, Cole Mallory.
Thank you, Cole. So the image that's up there now, what direction is, are them doors facing?
East.
Uh, yeah, east.
They're facing east?
Mm-hmm.
So I see, did you guys talk about buffering, uh, east towards them apartments?
We did talk about the apartments.
I assumed.
I didn't know exactly what you guys want to see, so I didn't go into details, but we mentioned that buffering, you know, it might be a good idea there. I think there's some existing.
Yeah, there's some fence there in the tree area, I believe, but yeah, we're open to throwing up more fence.
What gets me is, like off restaurants or off businesses, you're coming out, the lights are, you're driving down the road, the lights are hitting you. You're coming out of your own parking lot, the lights are hitting you, stuff like that, so that's why I ask about that. And then also you have a driveway directly across, it's not directly, but you have the house that's across the road. So I don't know what your lights hit there and how much traffic you're gonna have.
So we brought this up in.
How much more traffic are you gonna have, do you think?
Uh, I really don't see us going there more than once or twice a week.
More than you already do, or no?
Uh, less than we do right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice.
We really aren't getting much out of this space as is.
I do agree that, I think that, um, this is my, okay, so now I'm in the realm of opinion again, so.
That's fine.
I think that the distance from where their parking lot's gonna be to this home, we're starting to get quite far.
Okay.
Or at least far enough from you, I'm like, okay, that's just normal lights. Hopefully most of their operation will be daytime, you know, in the winter it gets a little tough, because you know, nighttime gets like four hundred and fifty. But still, I don't, I don't foresee, based upon our conversation, you guys like really hanging out there like sitting at night. Now, the only people that I do kind of fear for early in the morning, I guess, would be these guys. And just like, you guys don't want to see them, they don't really want to see you, like, I don't see a downside, and you've got a little bit of fence there right now. And if it's not like cost prohibitive, which I hope it wouldn't be for you guys, I wouldn't be opposed to bringing up that fence that exists and just carrying it like another thirty feet to just cover the parking area. And then that keeps them out of your business and then, you know, you're out of their business and everyone can live peacefully.
I also think in our preliminary, you mentioned that the shield's over the lights to keep the angle down.
Yeah, we talked about lighting, you know, so.
Okay.
We always said don't, because I know, you know, obviously, I'm sure you guys do with your Dollar General, like, everyone loads a good wall pack, you know, but those things are direct. but those things are direct light into your neighborhood.
Yeah.
Indeed.
They are cheap though, they make really cheap shields for them, they're like dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With them doors facing east, you're not going to get a lot of light heading to the south anyways.
They're not to the south, and that's why I'm more worried about the, this apartment building than I am so much the neighbors to the south. I, you guys are bringing any wall packs on the south, you want your parking lot eliminated. And you want some light, I would assume for security reasons, and just if you guys are coming in there early, like, I would assume you want one wall pack.
Yeah, it's likely to be like, yeah, motion, so, I mean, I mean, I remember there.
Probably motion activated lights for the most part.
Yep.
Maybe even two-stage, real dim and then brighter. Now, you said you're planning on storing some telehandlers and fork trucks there. I guess I've got a concern, Coleman Road is not very wide, and it doesn't look to me like you could pull in there and turn your truck around, because you're probably going to have to have those on a drop goose neck lowboy, I would presume.
Yep, that's how we used to do it.
Are you planning on backing in off of Coleman Road?
Uh, so hopefully not, hopefully the additional parking space, it'll be a little easier to turn around in there, but.
You mean to the north there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they have that area, and then they'll also have this area over here, and that's about.
How big is that?
Minus, it's about fifty-seven feet, because there's ten foot buffer there, sixty-seven there, so fifty, sixty-seven minus ten, about fifty-seven feet.
Yep.
So between that and the two parking lots, hopefully you can get a three-point turn in there with the trailer, it might not be a bad idea, what's, why, why not bridge the gap here with this little area?
I think we're trying to keep our total coverage down, but I can't remember the, how much, we had some room to play with, I remember.
Yeah, I would shrink it over here then, and give yourself, give yourself room here.
I would certainly do that, because if you're going to bring in a lowboy, by the time you got the trailer and the tractor, you're going to be sixty feet long.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's just also proposed on having it there, because if we free up space in our current building, we can always just keep them there too.
Yep.
Where's your current building?
I'm off Old M.
On M seventy-eight.
Is that your black Dodge that always sits out there?
Uh, yep.
I see they have one truck sitting there all the time.
Small town, small town vibes. Okay, so I think honestly, man, even if, when you guys get integrating or laying down gravel or gravel, or like, it's just, there's going to be gravel there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest that.
I get what you're saying, they're about cow here, they're getting close, you know, some we talked on the pre-act meeting, because they're on one point zero something acres, and this is a lot, it's a lot of coverage on this.
Yep.
It's gravel, you guys are going with gravel, right, this is, or portion of this was concrete, right?
Uh, yeah, I think it's originally with concrete, um, yeah.
What kind of concrete you meet ours, I think concrete would be nice to have.
Yeah, it'd be nice for, if we end up having to do a three-point turn, so we're not just tearing it up, but.
We're just kind of, we'll just be paying close attention to your lockout.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think right now we're at thirty-two, uh, I don't know, max is thirty-two.
No, it's different, because we, that's on old.
That's on the old?
Yeah, we did your numbers.
Gotcha.
You're getting close, so it's seventy with drive and parking, and you guys were like at sixty-seven.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's a question here, because on this first page, it says existing and proposed lock covers being the same, I said, that can't be right.
Yeah, yeah.
About twenty-five seven.
But we, that's a part of our review that we do in the planning department.
Yeah, right, yeah. The other question I had, is the well is right beside your driveway and stuff?
Talked about that.
Is that well allowed to stay there? I mean, that's going to be a health department question, right?
It is a health department question, but you want to go into what you told, because we had the same.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to cover it with pipe knowledge.
Yeah, they're basically were saying they're going to have to like secure that with a bunch of lawyers.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there was talk of putting it in the building, but then access, if you have to work on it, makes it.
You got to, you probably got to slope away from that well too, right? So when the water drains down that, when it rains, you got to keep all that rainwater away from the well.
Well, the well's probably going to be several hundred feet deep anyway, so.
Well, the well will be, but the pipe going down is at surface level.
Right, the KC, PDC, impermeable.
You got to keep that water away from it.
So you're planning on keeping the drain field and the septic tank and the well, you're going to have an office and restroom in there or something?
Uh, in the proposed, we do not plan to have a restroom in there.
Oh, really?
The existing, there is one restroom. Yeah.
Yeah, we asked about that, and Bert Gelsa, and there was no standard that we had that requires their warehouse to have, if, you know, if they had employees stationed in the warehouse with an office suite, then the triggers, they require them to have a restroom. If they're storing it for building materials, and they have the restroom on site, you know, it's a mission, so.
Right, yeah, I, I don't think we could require it, I just think it would be an asset to have, probably. Especially since there's already a well and septic tank there. Okay, anybody, anything else?
I just wanted to say that I like the idea of the fencing, if we're talking about big trucks backing up to the east side of that building, then that is definitely going to be lights shining toward that apartment complex, so I think a fence along the extension of that parking area would probably be pretty reasonable. As somebody who's lived next to that situation in my life, I would have appreciated more fencing.
Fence makes for good neighbors.
Yeah.
And I'm sure too, like, you guys have, yeah, you guys have your materials and stuff, I'm like, you don't know who's living in those apartments.
Yeah.
I brought the fence on my end too.
Because actually, those parking spaces you've got are probably going to be empty most of the time, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So when you bring a big, big truck in, you've actually got.
They're going to have to.
That's why I measured that in, so I'd say fifty-seven with those parking.
No, yeah, well, with the parking, yeah, without the parking there, you get sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you get the twelve-foot driveway plus.
Well, if you want to pull, pull around flatbed, but to back in there, you're going to have to have.
Yes, you actually have more than sixty-seven.
Parking spot.
You get sixty-seven to the edge of the parking lot.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's the last piece. Yeah, like I said, from my perspective, when we did the pre-act meeting, we weren't seeing a ton of red flags here. I do think it's, and we're seeing, see what the health department might say about the well, I mean, you guys can always check with them early on if you want. We're going to send them an agency review after this, and then we'll get the public hearing scheduled for this one as well.
Just asking the question, noticing the setback on the other building, and just historically, they got permission to do that?
Yeah, no, it has been there forever.
There was something on here that said something about, it's approved in two thousand and seven, a variance for the yard setback.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think you happened to have brought it up in the pre-act, and Bert actually remembered that, so.
Okay. Got a memory like an elephant.
Usually that's a fact, but maybe Bert just had a particular interest in this one, I don't know. So, yeah, no good question, good call.
No other questions?
Anybody want to change anything, add anything?
No, looks good.
So it looks like they're just talking about some additional screening on that one side, and we'll make that a condition approval, but just, you know, keep that in mind.
Yep.
That should be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming.
All you guys know about dates, it probably won't be the first meeting next month, the present. Because we'll require fourteen days notice, and I'll get to you on that timeline.
It won't be the first meeting, because they don't have one.
Yeah, never mind, yeah, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, hope you have a great evening. Okay, let's move on, Township Property Evaluation Discussion. Miles, you want to give us an intro here?
Yeah, so I have a ton of attachments for this one, but I need you guys' feedback, because I started, I was telling John when we had our kind of weekly phone call, where we just go over what's going on in the apartment, I was making a table similar to like a scoring table that we use for the CIP for this topic, and I realized I don't have enough information to make that table right now. So, one, broadly speaking, I didn't even know what methodology to really use, so I, let's go to the bottom of this word document first, and I'll blow this up and make it bigger so I can read. So I thought about a simple scoring matrix, which would be like more of the CIP scoring methodology, where we just go through the properties, and we just give them a score, and we say like, we think this one, and then there would be comments, like, we think this is good to sell ninety out of a hundred, you know, we think you could sell this one too, seventy out of a hundred. I didn't know if those scores would translate to anything though, because it's like ninety out of a hundred to sell, what does that mean? Like ninety percent confidence in selling? And so it's doable, I think with comments, we could get there, and we'd have to define like what our scores mean. So I was trying to think through that, and then my other idea was property report with comments, so that one's more involved, but we could look, we at the planning commission, you guys, could look at all the properties in the suite of the township on properties, and then pull out like these ten to sell, and then just provide a report for specifically those ten. Because like a lot of our properties in the township are like, some, um, piece of property off the road, that's like a ten foot by twenty foot area where we have a pump station. We ain't doing anything with that, like, why would you, we can't even, I wouldn't even say it's worth our time to even look at it.
No.
No.
So that's, that's one idea, that was idea number two, and then checklist style evaluation, where we could give them, it's, I guess it's similar to a property report, but maybe a little bit more standardized, where again, you could do this for every property, and only send up ones that like may, like, there's ten criteria on the checklist, if it doesn't check seven of the ten, then it doesn't go to the board.
Yeah, I'd say yea or nay, you know, sell or no sell.
Yeah. So, and then it's like, you could do the, and you could do a combination of method three to evaluate it, and then method two. Once you do method three, and you do the sell or no sell checklist style one, because you could say sell, but then another point on the checklist could be, are there conditions of the property? And if the condition is must remain vacant, now, now you don't want to send it to the board.
Well, if you had that, that stipulation, you certainly wouldn't rate it as a seller, you know.
Right.
Yeah, but that's where the checklist comes in.
That's what I'm saying.
You rate it as a sell, but then like.
You go through the checklist and then, and then determine whether or not it's saleable.
But then once you have, once you do the checklist method, and you have your ten properties, then you can do a report on those ten.
You know, if I was on the board looking at this thing, I'd want to do it the other way around. Which property should we keep, and why?
That's a, that's the, that's great, yeah.
You know.
I, I've done just about all of that.
Yeah.
With all the sixty-nine.
You may have it all done, but I mean, it's like a sliver, we're going to keep that because it goes to this property, but, you know, I'd want to know what you're selling this one. What about these, why, why aren't we selling these other ones? Because we're keeping them for this reason. I'd want to know what we're keeping and why we're keeping them, and the rest of them, and the rest of them, we sell.
Yeah, so there's just two sides of that coin, so I was thinking more of the sell side, you're thinking more of the keep side, I like that too, I think that makes sense, it's logical.
Might be less work too.
Yeah, it might be.
Maybe it's hard to say, I mean, there's probably like seventy parcels in the township's inventory. I would think that out of that, because I, I am trying to think selfishly, what's the best word?
Economically.
And so I think there's probably like ten of those to twenty that I think are sells, but I think there's probably like forty to fifty that are keeps, so if I have to go through and write a report for fifty to say keep, that's more work. Now logically, I think that's fine, it makes sense, but it's, then I'm doing fifty specialized reports, where if I'm doing reports for the sell, I think I only have to do twenty reports, so twenty's less than fifty, so that's why I put the sell side.
I don't think you've got that many sell.
No, but I see what Ray's saying, like, it's logical, like, you could make an argument that, you know, that work of doing fifty reports is worth it, because it makes a more clear point to the board, like, you've got a lot of crap on your hands, and a lot of it has no reason to be on your hands.
I have already documented all of our properties too, and in, you know, in, in fetch mode, basically, so we could all look at it if you want, I think it would be.
Well, and this is something where if we do go down this path, I would probably ask John or ask you guys if we could make like a task force, like you or me, you, like another member would meet on a Friday, and we just go through this holiday.
Overpeers.
I wish that was the case, I was probably not.
I don't think you've got that many properties that we've got discretionary use over.
Well, the largest amount of properties that we have that could be saleable is the Polly Aqua Shores, right along Southwest Road, does it?
That's one of them, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I think, what, twelve, fourteen small lots, if you combine them, they would theoretically.
Another thought I had was, as I was trying to put this together, and we haven't got to enough factors to consider, I want to get his opinions of those are, but another thought is, so we've got three ideas of how to go through this information. My thought was like, well, it's been a while, John, as you know.
Yes, long time.
What is the board, like, how would the board like to see this information, because Ray's got a good point. I was thinking more sell, he's thinking more keep, like, if their board would prefer to have that report, we should do it that way, because ultimately, you're trying to convey an idea to the board, so should it be implicated to the way they want it? So I didn't know if it was worth it, John, for you to talk to Ryan and see what he wants it, and let me know.
I can do that.
Yeah, I think the other value of having, why keep these? Then you've got a record forever, we're keeping this, somebody asked the question fifteen years from now, well, look at the report, we're keeping that because of this.
Right, it's a park, or it's, yeah.
Because we go through and say, we're going to sell all these, but now you've still got fifty properties we're keeping, why are we keeping them?
So, so isn't each property need a list of anyways, like some type of matrix to begin with?
Yeah, so that's why I think we're doing a checklist style, would be good to initially evaluate all property, and then once we've identified, if it's in this, in your recommended seller keep pile, then you do a report. Again, though, I think it's worth probably asking Ryan how he wants to see this information.
Wouldn't the report be in that record to begin with, so?
In what record?
In the, in the scoring process.
Yeah, but the report would have more, just like the CIP report, it'll have comments, you know, it wouldn't be just like a seven out of ten. You know, it'll say, we, we came to this conclusion because this property is located adjacent to Park Lake Road, which is a sprawling corridor. We feel like this is a perfect size that would meet modern setbacks, therefore, a home could be located on this property. It'd be foolish of us to keep this in our inventory.
So are we going to consider like parks and recs plans for all these properties?
Yeah, you should, you should.
And Park Lake Advisory Board?
The Park Lake Advisory Board and then the Rec Advisory Board, I think should both be brought in on it, if they have any premeditations or, you know, thoughts on that, then.
I have thoughts for some of the properties that probably none of you guys would even care about, and then you probably have thoughts about what you could do with it, or trade it, or, for instance, Upton Road, the parks is developing it, I, I wish we could trade it for part of this section over here, so we could put our offices across the street and we expand. Because this is going to expand, wouldn't we want to have something that's right next door?
Yeah.
I mean, why aren't we trying to buy a piece of that or trade for a piece of that?
Well, I think that's a whole different conversation.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, that, that comment would have, probably have to be put into that scoring.
One, one particular, one particular about that parcel.
Sorry, you got on a rabbit trail.
That seventeen acre parcel over there on Upton Road, off of, off of Upton Road, is, it was given to the township by the DNR, and I don't think we could sell it.
Or trade it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, there's something, some verbiage in there that says something about that.
Well, that was originally a construction site.
Well, that was where they stored all their dirt and everything when they were putting sixty-nine in.
Yeah, well, they even did a commercial well there for their cement plant.
Yeah. Batch plant that was there.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is, we like the checklist style, and then using that to form the report. And we're going to get with Ryan and let us know his thoughts on this process, and by also mean staff, so we can get you something going. In terms of the checklist, and going to factors of consideration, right now I've got zoning classification, access to public or private road, drainage, size of property, adjacent land uses, wetland, other protected natural features, available utility maintenance, restrictions and conditions, like we were just talking about, does anybody else have any good ideas on what we can consider when we're doing some kind of checklist?
I mean, would it be worth considering like the actual real estate value? Because.
Yeah, I think we could, we, again, anything that we consider, we have to figure out how we're going to find that info, which, I mean, we could always ask Beth, but I think that plays more to the prop, that's like, now I have to get staff in the room. That, I think, is better on the report, once we've identified our properties, right, so we have our sell, don't sell bucket. Once we've identified our, our keep. Once we've identified our, our keep bucket, we don't need to know the properties are keep, we don't.
Right, yeah.
It might be what, good to know the properties are like definitely sell.
Yeah.
And that's when I can move Beth in.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yep, right.
So I think that's important information, but that should be in the report.
That's a great list. Along, along those lines, I think we should include in there, what are the possible uses of this property if we sell it? I mean, it can't be used for anything, nobody's gonna buy it.
Yeah, so like factors to consider potential uses?
Yeah, I think so.
Do we wanna talk about this anymore, have we done?
Any other, any other potential uses? Or potential ideas for, I don't wanna make this spreadsheet into black.
Well, a lot of those are gonna be sewer related properties, I'm sure.
Well, those should be quickly dispensed with, yeah.
And that's not even on the table for discussion.
I think, I think, uh, public use, parks, I think would be a big one.
Well, that goes into the potential land use, right, so one of the potential land use could be a park.
Like the, 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 uh, land along the lake, you know, that the township's been acquiring.
I do agree that I think you'd have to bring in, somebody from Parks and Record, DPW during this process to let us know, their thoughts, even if beforehand.
Well.
Well, I think the properties that would be relevant to their use, but I don't think that there's any sense in them sitting through us talking about properties that.
No, what I would do is I would have like Ben or Adam come in and just, they've been having discussions similar to you guys for years, I would have him, hey, Adam, can you give us your synopsis, on what the next fifteen to twenty years looks like on the ideas and things that are going on in the township? And then I can tell you about like, obviously we know about our sidewalk project on the north side of the lake. What I don't wanna do is, I happen to know about the Upton Road property and their park ideas through Ben, but if there's something out there in the ether that I might not know about, I wouldn't wanna be like, yes, sell. And then we end up recommending that to the board and then some way from the Parks Commission is like, no, we had a whole plan.
Yeah, they, they've got stuff drawn up for that, I heard.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know what they, I don't know if we don't talk to them, what they know.
One thing I'd like to say is that the DPW Parks Director has went on record to say that he doesn't have enough people to work on, a new, a new park such as the Park Lake Trail. So why in hell would you make a park twelve miles out there? Then you'd have to literally drive all the way out there to, to maintain.
Yeah, but you shouldn't sell, we might not have those people now, but we gotta think twenty, thirty years in the future.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so.
You don't wanna offload the property now if you have any thoughts in the future. Similar to the Park Lake Trail property, we might not do that now, but the county called or something, it was like, hey, we got three hundred grand to help you guys out with the trail where you want it.
Okay. The state, the state's already has three hundred grand to give us, all we gotta do is file the grant. It's been there forever.
So.
Call the DNR trust fund grant.
Can we use it for the playground and the parking lot?
No, it has to be used for where the property is, you know?
And if, if Adam's busy, John, I'm also not opposed to asking if we can get on their agenda, to talk to them at their meeting about it, like if just me and you as.
Well, we could do that, yes, and that might, that might be a better idea than them coming to us.
I think so.
I think so, why don't you, would you mind?
Yeah, I can work on it.
See if you could work on that and I'll talk to Ryan and see what he thinks that he would like to have, coming to the board.
Okay, so we got our homework assignments.
Yep, I think so.
Thank you, Miles.
All right. Okay, so now we're down to the new planning intern introduction. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're interested in, your goals and objectives?
Oh, sure, yeah, I'm Ally, I'm from like the metro Detroit area, Novi if you're familiar with it. Right now I'm starting studying urban planning over at Michigan State. I'm a senior there right now and I'm enrolled in their plus one program, which is basically a dual enrollment for your undergrad and your masters, so I'll be sitting around for a little while.
Great.
And yeah, today was my first day, so I'm excited to get into it.
Welcome.
Yes, very much so, welcome.
Um, we did this last time with Kate and I thought it was helpful for Kate to know you guys a little bit. Um, would you mind, John, if you guys went around and said just a little bit about your background and kinda like what brought you into the planning commission?
Sure. Where do we wanna start, we're, you wanna start, Mr.?
Sure. I'm Ray Kotke, as I, as, as, as Miles mentioned. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-seven, graduate of Bath High School, my sons are graduates of Bath High School. Um, lived on Park Lake my whole, well, since I was twelve and, uh, love the area. And I'd like to see it, you know, grow responsibly. And, uh, I'm a, a dedicated moderate liberal.
Now, what does that mean?
Well, I'm a Democrat that owns guns, how's that?
What's wrong with that?
Nothing, nothing at all. So, and I'm not afraid to say it either.
Now, we're pretty forthright, Kate?
Uh, my name's Kate Hagerman and I am the Board of Trustees representative on the Planning Commission. I was appointed to the Board of Trustees last, I guess it was November, early November.
She beat me.
And then, appointed to the Planning Commission at the beginning of the year, so I've been doing this since January and I find it very interesting. Um, in my regular life, I'm a high school chemistry teacher, I teach in Heartland, which is in the same competition leagues as Novi.
You know it, don't you?
Um, I, I am a graduate of Bath High School, as is my husband and one of our children and our second one here in a couple of years. So we both grew up here, we moved away for a little while and then we now have moved back. We live on a Centennial Farm that's been in my husband's family for over a hundred and fifty years. And, uh, we both spend a lot of time volunteering for the Bath School Museum Committee. Um, and we've got some big projects on the horizon there that, um, we involve the Planning Commission quite a bit, so. Yeah.
I'm George Baker. Feel like I've been here a hundred and fifty years. I just, uh, yeah, grew up here, lived here my whole life. Uh, long story short, just started serving in the community, mm, twenty, thirty, forty years ago. Started serving on some committees and then just been involved ever since. Cause I, you know, wanted, wanted to grow responsibly also. And I appreciate you very much, Miles.
Yep, no, no worries, you guys are the best.
Yep, I'm John Rankin, I've lived in Bath since sixty-eight. On the very north edge of the township, I've got property in Bath and Victor Township both, so kind of interesting mix. Been on the Planning Commission for probably twenty years, I guess, close to it anyhow. And I've got a long history of Bath here, I was the site person when we did the sewer system in Bath. I was the site engineer on site. That was kind of interesting.
Yeah, we know the problem.
Yeah, yeah, and there's a lot of things that I would like to have done differently, but didn't have the authority to do, so. That's another story. Mark?
Mark Krainer, um, I'm new to the area, moved in three years ago. So I'm, worked fifty some years in higher ed, uh, administration, operating dining services, bookstores, parking, housing, um, which you've experienced over the last few years. Anything that was, um, money making on campus, I operated it.
Ray Severn, I've lived in Bath for twenty years, I've been in Lansing area since seventy-four. I'm originally from Maine, I went to University of Maine, so I'm not local here. I've worked in Seattle and Alaska and here. Anyway, I'm an engineer, worked for City Lansing for eighteen years, consulting for ten and last fourteen for Meridian Township. So I kinda have the township, know what the township's doing and stuff. But I kinda bring an engineering field to some of the stuff that we're doing here. So I have different questions not being a planner, so. Planning's not my strong point in a lot of ways, but, uh, it's interesting, you know, I, I think I, I'd like to see the township grow in a, in a good way and when we first moved to, to Bath, it was, our population's grown a lot since we moved here twenty years ago. But some of the growth has, has been haphazard, I think. And I think recently since, I don't know, how long I've been on the planning mission, maybe eight years?
Yeah, yes.
So I think we've, we've changed a lot, you know, I have, architectural guidelines and a lot of other stuff happening, a lot of stuff that Miles has really helped us with and we've, we've done a lot, more since Miles has been here than I think we did the six years before he got here. So I, I should be giving it, get us on the right track and really pushing to get Bath to be a better place.
Yeah, and then on my point with, with this board or this, uh, commission is, they all bring a lot of expertise to it, there's like stuff that I would have never thought about with like snow plow and snow removal that like John's brought to life with me, like, where's the snow gonna go in the winter, it's got, and like, I wouldn't have thought about that. And then obviously Ray with the engineering stuff has been a huge help and just the community background, um, has been great, so they're a great commission to work with, I've worked with other commissions in the past that aren't near as involved. And that's almost more challenging, because I think the perception is that planners just want a commission to like rubber stamp what we're saying, but we don't. We need feedback because we're, we're young and we're growing and we're learning and if these guys aren't willing to offer their expertise, like we're not gonna get better either, so. It's been great, both ways.
You seem like a good group, it's nice to meet you.
Welcome, have fun doing the minutes.
And actually, Ally has been, and Kate really appreciates the break because, we had his EBA meeting in there, we've got a lot of board meetings and so like, we were down for one, me and Kate were trading the minutes, just because I didn't wanna make Kate do them every time, because it seems cruel and unusual. And now we'll go back to whatever meeting they're at, they'll be responsible for that seven minutes in our standard format, so.
Well, don't be afraid to make suggestions and give us points of interest on your behalf, because we, we appreciate information, we like diversity of opinion. We're not a rubber stamp board by any means at all. So, uh, don't be afraid to voice your opinions.
Nope. Yeah, all, all the stuff you're learning in MSU, we need to know.
I like that, yeah, that's true.
Have a lot of fun, you guys.
Um, if I might say, I'm going to, put a, a little, um, PDF document together for us for that, the Park Lake properties, not Park Lake properties, we have mostly, but the township owned properties. So that everybody has a graphic, you know, that they can see where all the township properties are.
Okay, well, I wouldn't include the lift stations, to be honest.
Oh, no, I just did that because they show up and they're just, they're just a, a plat number, so.
Right.
That's why I show them.
Yeah, they do, all they, all have a parcel number and everything, yeah, I know.
Can you include them and just mark them as such?
Yeah, I, that's what I do, I, I make a, a map and a, uh, numerical list with the parcel numbers.
That's great, terrific.
Both, yeah.
Yeah, that, that'll facilitate the process.
We all like pictures to look at.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we like visuals, yeah. Okay, any, uh, new updates, Miles?
Oh, yeah, just Ray, when you send that, can you send it to me?
Yes, sir.
I can send it to, that way you guys aren't communicating with each other.
Right, I would always do a BCC anyway, so.
Oh, well, then that would work too.
Okay. No, I'd just, soon you look, look through it and you can.
Yeah, cause you'll notice even when I email you guys, I BCC everyone, that way we're staring in requirement, I wish all bodies would do that, because it's just more transparent.
Yep, exactly.
It can't be FOIA'd and your weird stuff. Um, okay, sorry.
You know you can be.
Uh, we can be, no, we can be FOIA'd and then they would see in the FOIA that everyone was BCC'd and will be sued.
Awesome.
Okay, uh, I just got a couple things, John, that's all, um, report from planner. So I'll just go over some general stuff that's going on with the department, obviously we're on an intern, um, we've been doing our onboarding, um, Kate took a little bit of a break last month, which is great, this is the last summer semester, um.
Yep.
So, you know, he's trying to get out into the workforce come December when he graduates. Um, little update, if you guys remember here when Fee, the intern was here, it looks like she's on the job hunt, I've had several employers call me for references, so we wish her the best of luck in finding an employer. And I, I hope, I spoke to, uh, somebody today, um, that was looking for a reference and, you know, I think this internship program is great for these guys, I think it puts them leaps and bounds apart, especially because, they'll, they're able to say like, I go, I've been to hundreds of planning commission meetings and I have helped write ordinances and I've helped with plan reviews. It's not just, you know, like I did an internship for the city of Flint in two thousand sixteen and I think I went to one planning commission meeting.
Serious, when you were in, on the internship, wow.
Yeah, and I think I mostly just did mapping and.
Jeez.
There, I, I mean, it was nothing, I mean.
Like GIS?
Yeah, I just did GIS, but the most basic GIS.
Wow.
Our interns are doing the work with us, so, and that helps out when they go for those interviews.
Yeah, very much.
They can talk intelligently about how an ordinance is structured and what the role of the planner, at least a local role.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, so we're, so that's going on, I just wanna make everyone aware that the program is working. In terms of developments, it's been super busy, I'm not gonna go into what you're gonna go into, Kate, with the report from the trustee, because there's a lot at the board, you can go into all of that. But basically there just is a lot to come from Kate in terms of what's at the board level right now, uh, things coming up in the queue right now. Uh, going to the realm of rumors a little bit here, uh, the word on the street is that the abandoned Horton's is going to become a Domino's Pizza on, the one on Chandler, so I don't know if that matters to you guys, it might matter to you, because you order pizza and you're pretty close.
That too.
But.
No, Marcos is right there, they get good pizza.
Well, I like Marcos too.
Marcos is the best.
I would do Marcos over Domino's as well.
Marcos is the best.
Yeah, it is.
Now, I don't know if you guys noticed in Mo, in Noco Lofts, um, on the edge, uh, and this ain't come through planning, because it's a shopping center and on the edge of there, Moka is the name of the coffee place that's going in there, so it's gonna be Moka at Noco.
Cute.
Um, they'll have a drive-through, cause that suite was always stubbed in with the drive-through. That was always a part of their plan, we went back and looked at it all and we were like, okay, like they don't get anything from zoning.
No.
So that's kind of exciting, cause there's not really a great place to get coffee on that corridor that's close, so hopefully it's good. You can go to that big Viva, that parking lot's a nightmare there, so. On the Sagmo side, a lot of road construction, M Doc's really been like working us over, can't do anything about what they wanna do, they just steamroll us. They also have the Meridian Water Project, um, on that Coleman entrance, uh, there's some stuff going on there, they just closed down the intersection of Coleman and Park Lake. They tried to close it down Friday, no notice, and they got slapped on the wrist by the road commission, so a big shout out to Mark Trotter for having her back.
Sweet.
Um, and so that was good. Uh, in terms of some of the Webster Road corridor stuff, I got news today and I think Kate, the Karen will likely bring this news to the board if it's asked of her, or if she can get it in her report, um, that it looks like we might be able to start knocking on some of the sidewalk work in the fall after all.
This fall?
Yeah, this.
Oh, wow.
So that'd be good. On, yeah, on the Webster Road going down here, we secured the last signature we needed from a private owner for some of the sidewalks, so it was just really intense negotiation process with some of these landowners, more so than I really thought we'd have to, so, you know, people are really extracting from us and so you got lawyers involved, which is always, you know, the worst. But, you know, it's their right, so it's their property, um, you know, so. That's going well, I think it's not going great, um, just a lot of hoops to jump through and, you know, it's these grants here, they, it's great to get grants, but man, they come with strings.
Yeah, they sure do.
And, uh, so anyways, though, sidewalks this fall, maybe, hopefully, and the rest of the construction in the spring. Uh, we have been working hard to get all the items lined up for our Chandler Road project, which is that ten million, twelve million dollar project that will go down. We are getting steamrolled by Eagle right now. Eagle was a real problem child with us on many, um, development fronts, um, including Mr. Estrus Development Downtown. Eagle was involved somehow, now. So we're working it, we're working through it, um.
Is it because of the?
Is it because of the prior use of that?
Prior uses.
It was because the railroad went through there, I bet.
Yes, there's an underground tank that somebody illegally took out in the nineties, crazy story that I got told by the health department the other day, got prosecuted, went to jail. But there was a plume that was developed and identified, the health department assures me that all of our water is safe, and I said, if our water's safe, then what are we worried about? And then they said, well, Eagle's got it on the registry, and I said, well, then get it off the registry. And they said, they're never gonna do that.
Never happens, not with Eagle.
I'm like, well, thank, well, this is great. So, anyways, I'm working it, we'll see. I just wanted to keep you apprised of the various hoops and turbulations of my life, but it's going well. And then, other than that, there's just a ton of interest in the township, the project desk is full, we've slowed down a little bit on the residential side for the season, I think. I'm curious, you know, we do these end-of-year reports for the planning department that we bring you, like every January, we'll bring you a report that says kind of how twenty twenty-four went, and there's different metrics that we use. Right now, midsummer, we're way ahead of where we were last year, midsummer. Now, going into late summer, early fall, we've started to slump behind where we were last year.
In residential stuff?
Yeah, on the residential side, so I'm curious to see if that slump continues, and that could be an indicator of like our local market and people's disposable incomes drying up. Obviously, interest rates have remained high for a long time now, maybe longer than some people think is appropriate, and so we, that could be what might be going on. You can't pay for a debt when you got ten thousand credit for it, you know? And I guess reflected in all kinds of ways at the township. So, we'll see how the end-of-the-year report, the zoning, amount of zoning and building permits we issue year over year are a really important indicator for kind of the disposal income and health of our local economy, because we are such a veteran community. So, yeah, that's kind of the state of the department right now.
I heard that Subway is moving out of Meyer and moving over there, where, beside Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, I don't know if you guys saw that, they got their signage approved for some wall signs, they're gonna do them in the same style as the rest of wall signs on that building, which I'm very happy about because large corporation, I figured they might just do some kind of vinyl sticker Subway sign, which would look terrible when all the other places have those really nice kind of, they're wall signs technically, but they kind of protrude a little bit.
Are they backlit?
They're backlit, they're very nice. So, they're doing it in that same style, there was a little bit of shakeup at Subway because, I don't know if you guys heard the news, anybody here? The Subway that was at Myers, the franchisee owner, was taking their tips from the employees and pocketing them. So, Subway as a company took that franchise owner's franchise license and gave it to a different franchise owner, and that person wanted just a clean slate, so they decided to make the move.
Good.
Not sure what's gonna go into Myers, haven't heard.
They were planning it up.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm assuming Myers is pretty good, I always say Myers has a side hustle in real estate, so.
They seem to.
They always have, every Meyer, pretty much.
Yeah, I just, so I'm assuming they'll get something in there, be it an eye care place or otherwise.
So, where's the Subway moving?
Next to Flora.
The marijuana place.
You got Berry's Bagels too, nobody knows what's going on in the donut shop.
Right, John, right in between Dunkin' Donuts and Flora, the marijuana place, in that little street.
There's a little place that's vacant there?
There's more minutes in there.
Oh, that's right.
There's gonna be.
They were going to use Suite B, which is Subway now, the original intent for that was to be grow, but if you follow the marijuana market at all, the grow market for marijuana has dropped off a clip.
Oh, yeah.
It's completely oversaturated.
Oh, yes, oh my goodness, those people that built that huge facility at Weberville, I feel bad for them, oh my goodness.
Yeah, and I know that old Summit Gem, which I think the Maxxer ended up buying, was supposed to be like a giant grow-up for Sky Mint, and I'm not sure if that's still the plan now.
Sky Mint's history.
Yeah, so, yep.
Well, Jeff was talking about buying the old, not Walmart, Sam's Club.
He did buy it.
Down on May, American Road, did he end up buying it?
He did buy it, and I believe Norm Fassner is operating out of a portion of that, which could be to buy.
Oh, are they using it for warehousing then?
Yeah, he was, but there are norms in there using it for warehousing, and that could be alleviating some of the pressure on the norm. I didn't really talk about that in my report, I should talk to you guys. Basically, what's going on with that right now, and we're all a little curious, is the development agreement's not going great. We, I went back and forth on it, the developer feels like we're being unreasonable, I think.
Yep.
I won't put words in their mouth, but it's the, and we're just kind of getting a little ghosted by them right now, is what the kids say. And so, we'll see, we're trying to engage. I have an email from, hopefully, some people about it that I need to read now, so.
Aren't they, don't they operate out of Summit too?
Norm Fassner, they have a facility somewhere in Lansing, I don't think it's all that Summit Gem, I think they have another small facility that they're, they were growing out of, and it made them desperately need something new.
Okay.
I think just trying to bridge that gap with the Sam's Club site. This is rumor and speculation, for a legal disclaimer.
Rumor and speculation.
Yeah.
Does Allie bring that to the, to us, or?
Yeah, sure, we'll put that in the minutes, rumor, this is all rumor and speculation.
No, that isn't all bad, though. Well, I don't see any public, so let's move on to Kate, you got a report for us?
Sure, the Board of Trustees met last Monday, and it was, it was all the Miles show for the majority of the meeting.
I didn't realize it was gonna be like that either.
Just how it fell, time-wise.
Like, I thought like there'd be other like stuff going on.
I watched, and you were like down, then you were up.
Yep, yep. In terms of the items for action, the land clearing and cutting ordinance was approved, that was a four to two vote. The two marijuana ordinances were approved also by four to two votes. The landings at Hawk Hollow Number Two, special use permit was approved, six zero. Those were the action items that came from the planning commission, and as I said earlier, I really like it because I, I enjoy feeling knowledgeable about these topics for the rest of the Board of Trustees, it's probably the first or second time they're hearing about it, and for me, I'm like, this is like the tenth time I've looked at these plans.
I'm getting bored here.
Well, I think you do say that, or like, say to them, yeah, we really looked at that because sometimes I feel like they think we like rush these items to them.
Right, and I, yeah, I feel like by the time it's coming to us, it's been months and months and months that it's been going through this process, so. Let's see, and then under new business, pretty much everything else we've talked about was introduced from the planning commission, so the non-motorized plan that we spent quite a bit of time talking about, that has actually officially made it to the Board of Trustees, the Fu Court Lane Service Station that we looked at a couple times. They were introduced last meeting, the Little Bloomers were introduced because we decided to move, to advance that through. The Meadowbrook West was introduced, which that one especially, I feel like we had here at the planning commission quite a few times. And then, as well as Ann Drive Small Private Road, so Mr. Kessler was at the meeting the whole night too. And I think that's it, so all the, all of our agenda items are now at the Board of Trustees in one spot or another. And that was pretty much the bulk of our meeting, there was just some details from the assessor and the village that just passed, and some Webster Road updates, which we just got from Miles, and that was really the bulk of our meeting. So, I think that that is all that I have to update you guys about goings-on at the Board of Trustees.
Yes, Kate, what was that second one again? Sorry.
Second one what?
The second item that was discussed at the board.
It was the second one that was approved. Oh, the marijuana stuff? It was our two, the two marijuana ordinances.
That's how marijuana is spelled in state law.
Wrong.
Well, marijuana industry did really mad about that.
They can take that up with the state, they can't take.
Yeah, or they, really the feds, because the state copied all the feds, and they go ahead and schedule drugs.
Yep. That is true.
The Biden administration can really blame some people if they would sort that up.
That's, that's interesting, interesting dealing with the federal government, it's like dealing with MDOT. Anybody got anything that they want to talk about?
My usual, thanks for all those that worked behind.
Pretty short meeting here. As usual, Miles is holding us up, I should say, carrying us.
Thank you to all those that worked behind the scenes.
Yep.
Welcome, Allie.
I got a couple things. On the Webster Road project, are they gonna try, when they, they filled in that low area?
Yes.
Just so that is the hump, are they gonna try to cut that down at all?
I don't know.
I talked to Mark about that once, he said it's part of this filling they weren't going to, but that really needs to be cut down, a couple feet.
You're talking about when they get up here?
Yeah.
But when did you talk to him, was it before it was only gonna be like a four-inch millimeter all the way, because we were able to move on here?
When you say all the way?
They're gonna take almost a river of place.
Oh, okay, maybe we'll be able to lower it down.
I talked to him, I'm saying.
Give us, give us better visibility with that crest, yeah, okay.
I talked to him last week, and he said they're gonna knock a few inches off there. I'm thinking you need.
A few inches, maybe a couple, twenty-four inches would be good.
I was thinking you need to knock a couple foot off.
Yeah, exactly.
But I, I know they're gonna knock some of it off, how much I'm not positive, but he says a few inches, to quote him.
The more the better, bro.
But we have a whole nother year, so I didn't, I didn't push it, so I'm thinking.
But maybe when it gets closer, maybe you, when it's actually, when the bulldozer's out.
Yeah.
He needs to support, if you need to support our company meeting.
But if you look at the building where they leveled.
Yeah, they, that's a little bit lower.
That's a little bit lower, so I'm thinking maybe if eyeballs, right?
Well, there's one, there's one thing, Ray, on what the plans say and what they have to submit to MDOT and the feds, and there's another thing when the crews out there, right? What actually makes sense at real.
Yep. And George, at, at your road committee meeting, you brought up roundabouts, right?
I did not, but we, we've talked about them, what?
Ad nauseam.
Ad nauseam.
No, probably, you know, many years, we've just.
They save so much money, I just don't understand.
Because someone wiser than me suggested that if we are gonna put roundabouts in, that we should be gathering property to do that before it gets bought up and something else put, gets put in there. So, like on the corner of Chandler Road and Clark Road, if you were to put a roundabout there, you could have bought the property up before the house is built.
Yeah.
Now there's a house built there.
Well, that house, that house is far enough off the road, you could still do around.
Right, we could still do it, but, yeah, but that's been, even when you were on the committee, Ray, we talked about that.
Yep.
I think that's important.
What about, what about, we've got enough property, so we don't build one that's too small.
Right.
That's correct.
I agree.
If they're too small, it always comes to mind to me is wanting to do it in Clark.
I'm gonna run you off the road, that's what.
That's a terrible roundabout.
I know it is, it's really small, I went through there yesterday.
Anyway, they got a strike coming to that, it's not right here, I talked to Mark about that once before, I gotta talk to him again. HO, the, no, the energy policy requirements?
Yes.
I don't know if there is a state law that's been passed that impacts homeowners associations?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
There's one about solar panels, I have.
More than solar panels, it includes clotheslines and all kinds of stuff.
Clotheslines?
Yes.
Really?
Energy saving modification includes, but it's not limited to, the following on the list is a clothesline, that's the first one on the list, a clothesline.
You cannot put a clothesline up?
You can't prohibit it, you can't prohibit putting clothesline up.
Oh, oh, oh.
Which an HOA might love to do.
So, these are all the things that homeowners, homeowners associations cannot prohibit.
HOAs do some stupid stuff.
The other thing that's gonna affect homeowners associations some is that sometime, in about October of twenty-five, every homeowner association has to, has to have an energy policy.
An energy policy?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Are you saying you want to fund that policy?
I don't know, they didn't say that.
I guess you guys want to sell a fund.
Yeah.
They'll probably just put out their suggested one, and if you don't have a lawyer to write one for you, then you just have to use their suggested policy.
That's all they do.
That boilerplate.
I don't know. The other thing that's come up somewhat because of this Chandler Road, I mean, the pub course work there, is request by residents that say, how do we keep truck traffic off the residential streets? Because right now, some, some truck, truck traffic has gone away from Ann Drive through Hawk Hollow to Chandler. And I talked to the county about that, and they said, well, they were approved to do that, but Meridian Township has a truck route ordinance, which I got a copy up here. What they basically have said is, okay, these are all the truck routes, if you're gonna leave that truck route, you've gotta go for the shortest distance from a truck route to your destination. And I think that's something that maybe Bath Township should look at.
That's something the road commission, I think, should be on their docket.
It, it should be, Mark didn't seem to be excited about it.
Oh, I'm talking ours.
Oh, our Mark.
Yeah.
The road committee.
The road committee, yeah, sorry.
Who enforces that, Ray?
Police.
Local police.
Local police.
So, it's a.
It's a regulatory ordinance.
Regulatory ordinance.
Yeah, they don't have a weighmaster or anything anymore, do they? Or you never see one.
Well, the only time that would be was when there's weight restrictions on.
But no, they, they can pull you over if.
Well, yeah, you could be, yes, but.
For an inspection even.
That's kind of, in a construction project, you very rarely see them enforcing that, because how are you gonna be cognizant of how much you put in the truck? I mean.
How many garbage trucks are overloaded?
Well, a garbage truck's overloaded anytime when there's weight laws on, that you can't even classify on a, except on a Class A road. They're overweight even if they leave the Class A road, whether they're empty or full.
Yep.
Is that something you want to put on the road committee agenda?
What, truck, yeah, if that's where it should go, yeah.
I mean, I don't know whether it should go there or not, I'm not advocating for it.
It seems logical that that's where it should go first, and then they, if they approve it or, you know, feel it should go further, then they can recommend it to the road commission, the county road commission.
Well, the thing is, this would be a Bath Township ordinance.
Right.
Right.
The only thing we would need from the, we'd need approval from the road commission for would be to say, in this ordinance, we're gonna specify which ones are truck routes. And county doesn't really have, they have what they call Class A, you know, primary roads. Some, some have weight limits during. So, I think we'd have to have the approved list of that from the road commission, so these are the truck routes that trucks are allowed to use anytime, given the weight restrictions. And off that, they can't do that unless they're going short distance from their truck route